All right, so we, all right, it is two o'clock, the recorder's on. So notice here by giving what is County Commissioners Court, excuse me, Court will hold a special meeting at the County Justice Hours Commissioners Court Room 576 with mainstream real deal Texas 78580 on Tuesday, October first of 2024, 2:00 p.m. for the purposes of discussing the following items during the course of the meeting, discussion of any item on the agenda to be had an executive procession, what is the County Commissioners Court conveniences executive or post session? In accordingly, section 551.01 of Texas government code, choosing final decision, final action, or final vote, vote be required in the opinion with County Commissioners Court in regards to a matter considering such close or exact activity in session. Then the final decision, final what should be in the open meeting covered. Uh, by either the open meeting covered by the notice upon the recommendation of the public meeting or a subsequent meeting of the Louisiana County Commissioners Court upon orders thereof as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm going to call a special meeting to order, Madam Chief, if it could establish our court please.
Yes, your Commission Precinct one, absent Commissioner Precinct two.
Present.
Commissioner Precinct three.
Present.
Commissioner Precinct four.
Present.
I'm a county judge.
Present.
We do have votes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we go to line item three. And by the way, Commissioners, uh, all of these line items have to do with the auditor, uh, is the one that suggested or the one that I guess was requesting that we, uh, had this meeting in. And so line item number three is discussion action in regards to library fees increased. If you remember correctly, these library, library fees have to be, we have to have that in place in order for us to qualify to be able to apply for certificates of obligation. How this comes about, I really don't know, but I have verified it with, uh, our bond counsel, uh, Dr. Inos. And so what we had suggested back in the budget workshops is that we go from five hundred to ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
To five thousand, to, to, to five thousand.
Was it, was it from five hundred to ten thousand?
It was from five thousand to ten thousand.
Five thousand to ten thousand.
We are going to do five thousand this year and ten thousand next year.
What's that?
Now we're going to do five thousand this fiscal year and ten thousand next.
And when on that December, how much you make before taxes?
Yeah.
Budget. It wasn't real all amount.
Melissa, can you hear me? Get ahold of the auditor.
I called her right now, she'll be longer. Maybe call her again.
This was your meeting room?
Yes. That's why, this might bring the, the things out.
This was up to yesterday.
And yeah, and I will take a shot at the other. I don't want to be, the, I guess in the interest of time. Uh, okay, and then also after we filed the special meeting agenda, then two other issues came up from her and we did an addendum, so if you look at the next page, there's addendum number one and two. But I, I'm not sure about this specific, these are all things that we had discussed at one point and how did you want it to be official. For number two, the addendum, and you will, we'll come back to it. That's something that you guys are familiar with, that was something we discovered as far as fees for the water development board projects.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it's really a thousand per project because it's five hundred for the loan part, five hundred for the grant. So the bills came in and that's, that's why she, she brought it up.
But I, I didn't, we did this last year also, though.
We did, well, we, we paid it when, when it came in, but I guess what she's trying to do is to make sure that we're not really approving, we're approving the pay, but I think she also wants to make sure that it's on the, uh, account from capital fund number two, pay of funding received. We already received, we did receive it yesterday. Your government?
I could have to do it. Oh, it's running, that's good, I guess, he's my heart.
Okay. So I, I've already mid-cornered here. Okay, so we go with line item number three, discussion action in regards to library fees, right now that we had it at either five thousand or five hundred?
Those five hundred each, uh, precinct and administration five hundred. But that was before, so.
That's the part that we got, we got. So it has to do with Rotten Bridge, right?
Yes, well, we need new Rotten Bridge.
What you say, it's five hundred?
Per precinct.
Per precinct, so it's.
Yes.
Per, oh, but it has nothing to do with, with Rotten Bridge?
No.
Okay.
It's part of the, I don't know if you recall the bonds, the certificates of obligation.
Yes, I mentioned that.
These are the fees that, uh, are required or recommended by the financial advisors.
Right.
So, um, for fiscal year twenty four, they were at five hundred apiece for each precinct and admin. However, during budget workshops, y'all discuss increasing them. But for next fiscal year, or this fiscal year, because we're already ten one, uh, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, um, what's being presented is, um, so it can be ten thousand dollars in total or two thousand dollars apiece. That was discussed during budget workshops and that was what was funded in each precinct and in administration building. So it's just approving what y'all discuss.
Just so that we, I understand it. Uh, this is, this is, this is, this is not fees we're gonna be charging the public.
No.
These, these are just a matter of, uh, budget.
Well, it's not in essence that you are paying, um, you, we do do a requisition, you are paying, um, I just don't remember if it's the library for, for those fees, so it comes out of each precinct and admin, so you do make a payment. And it's, it's to show that the county is receiving. It's the county is receiving those fees and it is an actual, it's not just a budget, it is an actual payment that is presented and I just can't remember, I believe it's the library who receives it.
Okay, so when you say.
So you're paying yourself.
When you say each precinct.
Yes.
Oh, we're referring again to Rotten Bridge?
Yes, Rotten Bridge, so.
Okay.
In essence, um, it is, uh, because Rotten Bridge, every, every fund is separate than admin, so they're contributing five hundred dollars apiece from each precinct onto the general fund, library fees, collection or revenue. And admin is doing the same.
So now we said a five hundred, it should be two thousand?
Two thousand dollars, yes. And that's what presented today.
And, and thi- this is based on Commissioner, the, uh, recommendation, uh, of, uh, of our financial consultant.
Right.
Having to do with that, uh, process being needed for certificates of obligation. Knowing that we're gonna go to those again because of the court on renovation, he suggested increase that so that he can go that, that healthy. So now, at, at the time Commissioner, I, I didn't realize that, that it did come from, from the precinct themselves. I thought it was just a matter of, uh, the general fund being in.
Um, did you know what the reverses?
No, I don't know if there's a specific requirement of why, or I'm assuming it has to do with funding of why the precincts have to contribute, I'm not sure if it's a requirement or that's what y'all discussed or elected at the time the financial advisor gave y'all the information. I just know looking at the bond, the bond documents, it's included in there that that was, I guess, part of how they would be able to finance y'all if that was enclosed in that agreement for the, the bonds, the certificate of obligations that not issued back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
What do you, what do you know?
Yes.
Yeah, needless to say, it's in their, their budgets?
Yes, it's, it's been in their budget since y'all had those, uh, bonds, certificate of obligations back in twenty twenty. Except that the fees were always steady at five hundred, um, each precinct and admin. So this last budget workshop, we recommended, maybe we should increase it and that was based from the financial advisor's guidance because you might end up getting another bond in the future with the historical, uh, grant.
Sure.
So that's the reason why, he said, let's go ahead and take a proactive approach. I might as well budget for it moving forward at a higher amount, it doesn't, um, hurt their precincts, it's just an extra step to help give you, uh, upward advantage so you can get a, a certificate or a bond in the future.
Right.
Y'all have that history.
So our, our line items, our line items for the precincts went from five hundred to a thousand, correct?
To two thousand.
To two thousand.
That makes, like I said, yeah, for each precinct and administration, uh, department.
There's always that.
And it was already, uh, budgeted because y'all mentioned it during your, the budget workshop.
Whatever it came up as.
Yes.
Should be all there, Ben. That's my last one for October.
What, what line item is it?
It, I believe it's in rentals.
Rent?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and go back and check, yes, it's in the rental line item.
So it didn't break it down specifically to that?
No, it's included because for rentals y'all, especially the precincts, they have a lot of, um, extra funding for what's something done in the future, there's money.
So we need to remember that, the real line item, the two thousand. I know I've seen that number somewhere.
And it, it was basically a formality actually because it was discussed through budget workshops. I just didn't know y'all, I couldn't find the minutes and I know I had seen something where the court had to put the county library fees and that's why I recommended the judge might as well include it every year so you know you got, you approved the certain or not, and especially an increase in case the bonds, um, need, uh, I guess, a requirement or justification, it's been through court.
What, what should we do to make a change or to actually make it a library line item?
Um, I'd have to see, I'd have to look into it and just contact the financial advisors just to see, have more details about what it was, I just know it was in that line item. Um, and if I had more information, maybe we can separate it for the future. But in the meantime, it's embedded.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, and without knowing, right? It might be that it needs to be a separate, combined from a separate tax entity, which we found out due to the windmills that Rotten Bridge is a separate entity than general fund. It might be, I'm not saying, because if, if it is other tax entities, I can already see how it'd be hard to get, to get it from versus the precincts.
Right.
But we can also look to see what we mentioned, Commissioner, about reversion, it's always, always to, to do, right? But needless to say, uh, I, I do think that because it's, uh, it's a projected seventeen point five million dollar project that we, and in order to, to go to the certificates of obligation, we need to have the library fees in place, which we do, uh, that we do take that approach to it and then. And, and then the other thing, Commissioners, just so you know, is that, um, it's not for sure that we're gonna go to the certificates of obligation this fiscal year, it might be the next, right? So we, we're gonna see how it plays out with that. Okay, and just so that I understand even more.
Yes.
So the budget of the library, uh, went up the eight thousand?
It, I need to confirm and verify, but yes, because I, I haven't, it has to go in, back into the county, it's just, um, I know where it came out of, I need to go back and double check.
Right.
Yes.
All right. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Uh, good, some will, okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia second by Commissioner, pass, any more discussion?
Change. And then mention, uh, the amount for each precinct, sorry, for him.
Uh, yes.
Uh, I meant my motion to say, uh, two thousand dollars per precinct plus two thousand from the administration. I'm in the second, I'm in the second again.
All right. I have a motion, uh, second, I have a motion, second, any more discussion, all if there was a significant difference, a nine.
All right.
And all of both same side, motion carries. Uh, line item number four. Uh, discussion approved of budget amendment?
They're gonna pass them up, the hard comes.
Did you call me to agree on that?
Yes. Hold on, I'll be, no, I'll be on three minutes and then I'll have them sent out.
Then I can go with that, too.
All right, uh, Commissioners and Judge, basically, um, I'm just submitting, um, for for, uh, or correcting actually, for, uh, budgets and then one's an extra one that might as well take care of that came up for like veterans paid one. She needed, um, funding because she had a, a repair that came up and so her budget was a lower, so I might as well include it, that one to make a an increase to her repairs and maintenance line item, and we're taking it from machinery and equipment, but that's within her budget. Um, for fund sixty four, um, there was a correction done of, of funding of fifty thousand that would get allocated to machinery and equipment under five hundred. And that one was because of a misunderstanding, miscommunication, um, we discussed it during budget workshops and so, um, when I had increased, I had increased an amount based on another, another line item and I had, um, we're going back and forth, so I am making a correction to that and that's why it should have been, um, an increase in the unencumbered fund balance, line item three nine nine nine, uh, fifty thousand dollars more. So we're just allocating that to where it should have been and it was an oversight. And then we have, uh, fund forty four. Again, this one is a particular one, maybe in the future the court can consider this from general fund, if not, it's okay, I just have to make a note. This one was also missed because, uh, the librarian assistant, her, she gets a stipend amount and that one is part of her salary, so when the five percent increase went across, this one was missed because this is a stipend, I mean, I didn't, I should have looked at it more closely, but this is one of those few that have a different funding set that way, so all her salary is general fund, um, except stipend part, it comes from the rebirth, rebirth and moral trust which the court had already approved, ongoing, you know, for this assistant to have as a split funding as long as there's funding available, so therefore I just adjusted that to show the five percent increase in her stipend as well because it's part of her salary. And then, um, that was within the budget, so it's not adding or increasing it, it's just, you know, holding money to, to offset that five percent. On, uh, the District Attorney's Pretrial Diversion, when she made her, um, her, her grant application, um, she included an amount and so, um, it was taken away from general fund and her other grant that she has, but she's making an adjustment in salaries because one of her staff was, uh, it was gonna affect her, her total salary for that employee since, um, that, the, I'm sorry, that, uh, grant, it split it even more. Before it was eighty twenty, now it's, it's a little confusing because you have to think about it, it's still eighty percent, um, general fund, but now that twenty percent got broken down even more, so therefore it was, um, uh, an increase to general fund, but it wasn't enough to cover the, the total salary that she was getting paid, um, and so, and that wanted to take it from her pretrial diversion account, which she was not using for a couple of years because she wanted to save up money to start using it again in the future. And luckily it came up where she does have funding to pay that small portion that wasn't covered completely. And that's what I'm doing in this, uh, budget, I'm just giving her that small portion and in totals, well, it's eight thousand with fringes, eight thousand eight ninety five. But it's included in the, in her pretrial diversion fund, which she had not used for a couple of years to try to save money and built that cushion again for future expenses. And I just did the corrections on those two employees and the salary, uh, but as well to show that, the, the increase took place. So that was it on those budget amendments. There are amendments, one amendment and more of a correction to include what was missed. But it still has to go through a budget amendment format for approval.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On, uh, the expenditures from the Rotten Bridge precinct four?
Yes.
I'm noticing here on three eight.
Yes.
The, uh, is that where the increase went to?
Yes.
On your five hundred?
Yes, that's where you told me, unless, I mean, we can change, I have the email here, that's why I, I'm letting you know, but that's where you told me.
I was supposed, I just saw that it's supposed to go over five hundred.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, no, I have it here because I was like, I guess that's what, we were discussing and I can make the change.
Can we make the change right now?
Yes, uh. Yes, uh, I'll just have to, Lizzie is okay with it, um.
So instead of three eighty, it's gonna go to.
Three eighty-five. And I can make the change.
So precinct four. Precinct four, it's uh, I don't think it's, let's see, expenditures.
Page number three.
Yeah, and I can reprint it and then you'll sign if it's okay with the court.
There may be some other, I I don't have the other, the other ones in front of me, I wasn't sure it was this one, but Road improvement four twenty. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget was one seventy-six, ninety-three. The patrol code budget amendment went to one fifty-six, nine oh eight.
I have the ones that was supposed here too, she don't have changed. Four twenty, it was one seventy-six, one seventy-three, and the one I have changed, is that what you're telling me?
The one I'm seeing here, if if the new one, it looks like it lowered it back to one fifty-six, nine oh eight, I'm not sure what the.
Then it might be a.
It's like a twenty thousand dollar difference, not sure what.
Yeah, it shouldn't have changed because it, I don't know why, the formula picked up the amended column, so now it should be the one seventy-six, nine seventy-three, and and I know probably where the other difference is at, but it's in three eighty-five. We take the math, the formula, it's because I have hidden columns. I have to work with hidden columns and for amendments, so that's where the difference is at, but no.
Okay, so that'll be the same and then.
And it should, it's gonna be balanced, those are the only changes and I'll just verify right now.
So the under five hundred should have stayed at eighty-five hundred, because I mean, that's just small, so.
Yes, yes.
Matter of fact, I'm giving a lot of that back, and then over five hundred should have gone from the eighty-five plus the fifty for that.
Yes, and I would make that change.
The date is wrong on the commissioner's court.
Oh, it should have been a zero one, not a ten, yeah, I'll make that change too, I apologize.
Alright, sure.
Very, one formula changes a lot of things. I see the rental line item too, now that I'm looking at it closer.
Yeah, and it's only saying, well, it's not the same.
Then it offset it with uniforms expense. Yeah, it should, if you add the fifty thousand to the total budget, the eight eight nine zero four nine gives you the new total amount. It's just that the formulas are proposed, grabs it from the amended and it's hidden, so that's why um, you'll see those differences, but I'm, if you.
So the nine thirty-nine, zero forty-nine is correct?
Yes, yes, it's just the technical part of the formula, so if you present or approve the budget uh, with decreasing the fifty thousand to the machine and equipment over five hundred, as we stated, I'll make that change and then keeping the budget as it was approved during the proposed, I'll just make the changes on paper.
Is there any way you could have the signatures from the department here whenever they get approved?
Yes. Yes, and I apologize, Lizzie, yeah, this, this is the thing is, I wasn't, these were not supposed to be like done this time. Yeah, and so since I noticed the changes, I I needed to make the changes, the only one, I have most of them here, so it's though the corrected, the only one that's missing is the DA, but she's out on a conference, so she says she should be back this month. But I I will make an effort to make sure the the future ones, yeah.
Yes, can I, then I'll to approve.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion in a second, for two budget amendments, uh, after the discussion, what needs to be adjusted. There any more discussion? All in favor signify with A nine.
Alright.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries, we go to the addendum. Uh, addendum number one, scheduled with two fifteen, it is two twenty-eight. And number one is discussion action to accept what is becoming health and welfare employment plan, fixed cost rates and paying funding activation for plan year ten, ten, four point one five. And this is the six, the
That you presented to the court basically the the fees allocation and the breakdown of what we received from the consultant. Um, every year the auditors asked us if we presented it to court and if it was approved. Although there was no change in total cost per employee. Internally, we have to get those, um, sheets revised and internally, the breakdown does change. And so we verified with Martha Rostberg and, um, there is a change for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. That's why, um, it is recommended that we do it every year to make sure we present, you know, to the court that the rate didn't change, but the fees did, the breakdown, and that way I can have that support whenever we get audited. That the court was aware of those changes.
Okay, the fees changed.
The fees breakdowns changed because we end up paying a portion to, you know, our self-funded account, which is the majority of it. And then, uh, our administrator, which is Boom Chapman, but whenever, even though the cost doesn't change, the billing somehow when y'all make changes to like the stop laws, to like certain internal documents or um, things that the insurance consultant recommends, then it does affect our breakdown and that affects our payroll uh breakdown and that's all internal. But that's our support and the auditors check, hey, you are collecting the right amount of fees. Um, was that approved, that the court was a, were there aware, so moving forward, it's they recommended us to always present it to court, just to make sure it's approved and if we get audited, that's our proof.
Alright, and this is the breakdown that you need in order to be in compliance.
Yes. For the audit and, um, for payroll purposes.
Alright, so there any specific question? This, the overall is that the, uh, the, what we pay for each loans remain the same?
Yes, and, uh, my staff just informed me that Ms. Martha, that is not that transplant, um, charge that was being charged before was canceled, so that's why it updated the 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 split in funding. Because there wasn't change and y'all approved the cancellation of that and so it recalculated the fees and adjusted it, so that's why there was a a change. But even if there wasn't, I would like to still continue to present it to make sure that y'all are aware it stayed the same, even the breakdown, et cetera.
Alright. Okay, is there any question pertaining to breakdown? If not, then can I, uh, contain the motion to approve?
Uh, so move judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner Delapaz, I can contain a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor signify with A nine. And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Uh, addendum, uh, addendum number one, line item number two, discussion action to approve payment of escrow. Agent fees and paying agent fees, uh, five hundred dollars for each of the following Texas Water Development Board accounts from capital plan O two paid upon invoice received this fiscal year ending in nine thirty of twenty twenty-five. And there, there is the numbers, commissioners, I'm not gonna read all of them, I can tell you that if you notice that there's a G in front of the number and then there's an L, G standing for the grant part, L standing for the loan part, and each of the projects has the two. Other than, uh, project number four zero zero nine six, that there isn't a loan to it. It is strictly, um, uh, what's it called, uh, pink kind, pink kind, but that'll come. I I I don't think it's there, well.
Is it ninety-six or six nine? Anyway, I don't know, but I don't know what you're talking about.
I wanna say it's six. It is six now.
And then there's two of them that don't have a G or a N.
Right, because those are our bonds, um, and those don't have an escrow fee. Those two where you see two by three, nine zero seven thousand, and two two two, seventy-six, zero zero zero. Those re- require a paying agent fee, which is not your escrow, but it's a paying agent fee. Um, I do wanna clarify, just, I spoke to, uh, one of the financial advisors, I believe, Matt Luhan.
Yes.
He mentioned, um, he mentioned that the escrows are paid until the loan proceeds are exhausted. So it shouldn't continue past that, but he told me to get with, uh, US Bank to make sure they can give us the balances and we can be on top of, so we don't continue to get, yes, overpaid.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, it was very hard trying to get that information because, uh, the Texas Water Development Board, I sent emails last year. Nobody could respond, even until this last one, I also sent, um, to US Bank an email, which she just said, thank you Maria, but she did not explain my question, so it's very hard to try to get an answer and he even agreed like uh, Texas Water Development Board is very busy and, you know, it's very hard to get ahold of someone, but if we have, if I don't if I don't see them clear enough, he said I can talk to him, or if I have further questions, or the court has further questions about that, we can call him and he has contacts over there that he can get us answers, um, for what questions are concerned we have.
Give me, give me, we got some direct contact, give me a moment. Oh, he's the head of all finance, which have introduced, introduced. Through the green rack and through the other task force that get them on. But, uh, so you're saying that, uh, whenever we we satisfy the the loan portion, there's no longer a fee on that, but there is only grants.
He said no.
Or a N one?
There is on escrow on the, on the, on the loans, not on the grants. So once the loans are depleted, then we're gonna start using the grant, we shouldn't be charged an escrow fee anymore moving forward. And so that's what I wanna, right now, we've been paying, you know, two, three years, but I don't know how you know, how long, um, those projects are those.
Four zero zero, four zero one zero, Sebastian, that's already been exhausted, we're into the grant now.
And that's why I'm gonna follow up with, um, if I don't get an answer from her again, uh, from this one was US Bank, I believe, but even Texas Water Development Board to check which projects, what are the balances? So we can make sure that, you know, we don't get charged more.
I I would hope that we, that we stop, my guess is gonna be there, we're still gonna have to pay the grants, I was just saying.
They said.
Pay now.
They said for the grants, but I'm not sure, on that project, I need to double check because these are not listed by projects, they're listed by, uh, account numbers, that's for those projects.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yes, they have a lot of numbers in there, so definitely, I'll I'll take your offer and contacting that person to make sure.
I'll try to reach out.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, what it was explained to me, she couldn't even straighten three or four, is that it's similar to like, for instance, when you build an house, you're, what do you deal with that, you get, for instance, builder's risk, right? It's only while the house is getting built, right? They're charging a fee because there's money's transaction. Uh, there might be two transactions a month, there might be three, there might be five, right, depending on how the project is going. So they're charging for those transactions and having to stay on top of the balances and what have you. The question I have for them is, as you brought up, commissioner, especially on the on the grant side, that we're, well, I guess on the loan side, is that we are, um, obligated for twenty years. So my question was, are you gonna charge us five hundred a year for the twenty years? You know what I'm saying, on each project, she couldn't answer that.
Yeah.
So the reason that I'm not too much, uh, is that the projects are getting, uh, done now, we have to get those projects completed. Then go to battle as to the fees, now having said that, we were all thrilled that they had said no interest. Guess what, there's fees, so that's the part that, you know, it's not surprising. Knowing that nothing is, uh, well, not necessarily free, because we have to pay it back, but but that there is, um, uh, 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 not a penalty, but there is money that we have to pay above and beyond the loan. Regardless of whether it's interest or fees, now I know. Uh, and mind me, you can't compare the amounts that it would have accumulated, even if it was a low interest uh, loan, right, let's say it was three percent or something to that effect, it's still a whole bunch more because of the size of the project, right, in terms of money. But nonetheless, it does hurt when you, well, it's me, right, that I didn't see it coming until we were on it.
Yeah.
But that's kinda like the battle that's going on with the, I'm I'm hopeful that that once the projects are completed, then we can have a better grip as to what is the real amount of fees that we're gonna be having to pay year in, year out for the next, uh, nineteen years.
And if I get the status on the balances, I'll share with the court, um, to see, because according to Matt, like we won't be charged further once the loan depletes, the grant, we're still gonna get funding, but no more fees, hopefully. And then the way, the, every year we'll be just presenting that report to make sure that, um, my department can make payments right away as soon as we receive the invoices for the those escrow fees. And we don't have to come to commissioner's court, because y'all are already aware, this is a pre-approved payment.
But but what is this add not to be used for?
It was five hundred and I counted eighteen times, so, yeah, it was like nine thousand and nice.
Nine thousand a year.
Nine thousand, yeah.
It depends whether we include the, uh, the.
Well, I'm including those, yeah, I included all the the grant loan and the two, uh, bonds, uh, which are the paying agent fees, they call it.
So I guess in in the loan, in the big picture, that amount of money, I mean, it's it's a nominal amount. But it stands to reason, and these are, these are, uh, fees for managing the escrow.
Yes.
So it sounds like really when the escrow goes away, it should go away.
That's, that's, that wasn't my.
Cause that one was gonna be paying.
Yes.
Paying loan.
Alright.
Did it, I did look for you, bro.
Uh, hello, motion by Commissioner Garcia, second, second by Commissioner Tigarina, any more discussion? All in favor signify with A nine, and all opposed same sign, motion carries. Okay, so line item number five, is can I entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn both the addendum and the special meeting?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Delapaz, second by Commissioner Tigarina, all in favor signify with A nine.
Alright.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries, thank you commissioners.